With the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation of our own accord, indivisible, with a great justice for all.
Good welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Two, which is to consider the approval of the minutes of two work sessions and the regular meeting that were held on August 13th, 2019. So the council does have the minutes of all three of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note that this time?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes of all those meetings as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Three, which is a consent agenda. And we'll bring the items up on the consent agenda up on the screen. And they include consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for a Marshall Police Department, consider the authorization to declare a vehicle as surplus property for the city of Marshall, consider the merit center lease with Minnesota West Community and Technical College, consider the approval of the resolution providing for the prepayment and redemption of GO bond series 2010B, consider the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds in the closure of debts service fund 368, consider the approval of transient merchant license for Mike Firm Allstate Insurance Company, consider the introduction of the amendments of the ordinance to section 54-3, the special assessment deferral, introduction of the ordinance that would be the ordinance that establishes the fees for the emergency protection fire service, consider the introduction of an ordinance allowing alcoholic beverages at city-owned facilities and parks, project 271, the street department parking lot, acknowledgement of the final payment request number three, consider the resolution for the signage, for the proposed signs at Lake Road, Michigan Road, and Halber Road, consider the amendment to the MOU with the SMSU related to the reporting of sexual assaults to the local law enforcement agencies, consider the tax abatement for Canoga Park Childcare, the action would be to call for a public hearing, and then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So, is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number 10, please.
Any other item?
Number 12.
And any other item? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number 10 was the ordinance establishing the fees for the emergency fire protection services. The action here is the introduction. Russ?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I apologize to all of you in advance. I forgot to call Kyle today and to ask him to take that off the consent agenda because I will be abstaining from all discussion and voting on it. So my apologies to the council.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion on the requested action to introduce?
We'll move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll note the abstention. So that brings us to Agenda Item Number 12, the street department parking lot project, acknowledgement of the final pay request number three. Jim?
I just have some questions, Glenn. On the end, the numbers didn't seem to make sense.
That's correct. So it should be the 292503.
Okay, the 69...
That should be over there.
The 64461 is...
It's not part of it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion does pass.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Question just for order. I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but Russ, why would you want to abstain from the discussion on those rates?
I just want to abstain from all fire, because of past firefighter...
Oh, okay. But I mean, I look at you as a resource on that because of your experience. I don't see a conflict, but I know it's obviously your choice, but, okay.
So we will move then to Agenda Item Number 17, the Tallgrass Liquor Annual Report and the proposed 2020 budget. Sharon, I'll turn to you and I believe Eric will be coming up.
We do have Annette Storm, Director of Administrative Services, who oversees the liquor store, who provided a presentation, and then also our liquor store manager, Eric Luther, will also be assisting with the presentation.
Welcome, Annette, and welcome, Eric.
Honorable Mayor, City Council people, and everyone, I want to thank you for letting me the opportunity to present kind of a picture of where we're at here, and also last year 2018, and also a little bit of how 2019 is going. I'll probably just touch upon the highlights of our packet that you received. As you know, the organizational structure, manager, and three or four full-time associates, or three full-time associates and 11 part-time clerks. Couple things. When we started last fall, designed a mission statement, which basically comes back to all decisions are based upon this mission statement for our personnel and full-time associates and the manager, again, following the rules, controlling sale of alcohol to intoxicated people and people under 21 or underage people, providing the best quality shopping experience for our customers, add a profit that is reinvested back in the community, and provide a great, fun environment that is positive for customers, associates, and managers. So, kind of establish that as a way to move forward with the operation and the business. You can kind of see sales and profits on page three at the bottom here has grown to $5,104,513, and a profit of $58,938, which is an increase of sales and profit when compared to 2017. So you have some graphs and some tables on page four and five, as far as some history there to kind of look at that. Then on page five, sales and gross profit by category, wine, spirits, and beer, plus miscellaneous, and gross profit by category, beer being the least profitable, by spirits, and then wine are pretty similar. So there's a kind of a snapshot of kind of the product mix that we're dealing with. Page six has a monthly sales comparison for the last five years. And that, you can kind of see as we move into the latter part of last year, sales continue to be positive, be strong as far as the direction of the liquor store. And as we see in 2019, that sales trend does continue with being a solid performance with sales and, I think, profits as we'll see at the end of the year. Some trends here, again, liquor, bourbon, Canadian whiskeys, and vodka lead the way in this category. Domestic beer is our biggest seller and somewhat our least profitable. Everybody wants kind of that case beer of the best price. We're competing with those customers from competitors, Minota and Green Valley and Folda and Slaton and all that. So that's an important product that we have to deal with and look at our margins and also look at what our price is that we're selling. Craft beer, as you know, continues to be a strong seller with new products and breweries in Minnesota. Seltzer water also, which is kind of the clear category, is a growing popularity too. You'll see lots of seltzers out there. Wine is our third category. Value wines and box wines lead the way in the interest. Your traditional cab, red chardonnay, and all those are strong sellers, along with the Minnesota wine, which is, we're fortunate to have a lot of Minnesota wine wineries in our area, and we do sell a lot of their products. So it's a good thing. So, we did put on some events, which is maybe a little bit new to everybody here in town, but we've, we held a Valentine Wine Tasting Event, which was successful. Minnesota-made craft brewery festival out at Red Baron here this past spring. And then we're planning on doing a holiday wine walkabout downtown later this fall. So some things there. I think we've had really great support and tremendous interest in tasting these, and these tasting events that, you know, get customers and get potential customers to try some of those things. We're the premier location in our area that feature these products, and community members and customers are seeking these out. And so I think we have a strong presence in our area with the products that we sell. We do tasting events regularly through the week, mostly on Friday and Saturday, just to have customers try new products and maybe existing products that they're not familiar with, without purchasing the whole bottle, and so to speak. So, and that spurs on sales there, too. Point five, community service. We've been involved in the community with some fundraising efforts with proceeds going to the pet rescue in Marshall. We just recently finished up a project with Memorial Park Phase III project with raising some money for that, to kind of put into that project there that's downtown. And then we're also currently involved with a fundraising effort with the proceeds going to the Marshall Fire Department for their tactical equipment and training. So we're currently with that there, too. So, a number of accomplishments that we've kind of hit the road running with, and you can kind of see some of those things. We've really invested into our people, getting them trained, getting them knowledgeable, so that they can recommend products to our customers, and hopefully increase sales with that. So, hopefully enhancing the whole customer experience. So on page eight, gives you kind of a snapshot where we're at for, currently, I took these numbers as of yesterday. Sales still hanging in there real strong. We're up 87 for the year on sales. Customer count, again, we're up 5.29%. Average ticket is also up almost a dollar, about to 3.22%. So, things are going along pretty well with, kind of where we want to be at, and I think how we want to grow as a business. You can kind of see the monthly comparisons, sales comparisons through the last five years. Again, you know, I think business is good. We need to continue to work with that to keep it better in the future, too. Couple things I put down for proposed budget expenditures that kind of directly relate to how we're operating the business with our computer software that handles running the POS, upgrading that. The current system is going to be obsolete very soon and not be supported, so we need to get that situated. There's also some fun things that go along with that, with electronic gift cards, and some other things that are important to our business with financials and some of those things. I'd like to kind of invest into a handheld scanning gun that would help us track our inventory better and also be more accountable with our inventory. We get a lot of product that runs through the store, and it's important for us to have electronic types of things there that help us manage that inventory. Category aisle signs is another big one, I think. They kind of made do with some different things at the beginning of the store, but I think it's time to invest into a better type of signage system that will enhance our customer experience. People will be able to do some things and shop and find some things on themselves. So, that would be one thing I'd like to kind of see us get. Refrigerated merchandiser for wine, again, we'd have that located up by, I think, as people walk out, at the checkout, to merchandise kind of cold wine to go. Again, it would be a great thing, is an add-on thing. People say, "Oh, I'll take one of these," and then it's right there, right? It's right now, it's kind of buried in the furthest part of the store. Another item was a four-way merchandiser, which would help merchandise smaller sizes, which, again, enhances the shopping experience, hopefully adds on to the ticket. People try something and stuff, they're not coming in to get the 50 or 100 ml bottle, they're kind of adding that on. So, so those are a few things I identified for, that might, I think, will help us with sales, will help us with merchandising and our customer service. I think Annette put together the 2020 budget that has kind of some of those expenditures that we're looking at. We did, I guess, base sales on this year's sales as far as our, just a couple of comments on the budget, rather than just taking it, I looked at each month, you know, so far for year-to-date for 2019, and then we kind of projected sales off of the current year versus just a one lump sum deal. So, I'm hoping that that's going to be a lot more accurate when we start looking at sales and customer counts and profits. So, and I think you guys will probably take a look at that budget a little bit closer as we get into the committee or whatever, I think so. So that's about all I have to say. Any questions or any comments?
Well, thank you, Eric. Questions for Eric?
Eric, just a question on part of the budget. Maybe this was Annette. I know you made a change in freight. I see in the 2020 proposed budget that you're going up another $6,000. Is that working with the changes you made, or is that, it's up about almost $10,000, nine or $10,000 from 2017?
Right. There's a couple components to that. One is, we're busier. We're going to have more cases coming in, so there's going to be a little bit of that. I don't have an exact number about if that costs us more, but when you start putting on $400,000 in sales, you know, you're going to have more cases come in the back door. It's going to be kind of a fixed cost, so to speak, because you're, you need that. The freight going from a private hauler, which we had before, to a company hauler, which is kind of the company that we buy the goods and products from, is doing that service. For us, they are a little bit more higher, but we do have a little more control with that system with credits and with damage types of stuff. The private hauler tends to kind of like drop it, and then, you know, then you're kind of like, "Well, we're missing this, we're missing this," or "This is broken." It's very sometimes challenging to get some of that credit that you're due, because they really don't have an interest in that. All they're doing is...
Dropping freight, yeah. So it is working, the changes that you made?
It is, yeah. We've actually picked up another day on our major supplier. So we get actually freight on Wednesdays and Fridays from Johnson Brothers, which is a large, they're about 50% of our product that we order from, which really enhances our outages on our, doesn't enhance outages on the shelf, but helps us with getting more product to the store quicker. So if you come in and you'll see something on Monday that's gone, we'll have it on Wednesday. If you don't see something on Thursday, you will have it on Friday. So that does enhance the shopping as far as being out.
And you answered the second part of my question, because with added freight, if it comes in more often, it's advantageous to the store, to sales, everything else.
Right. Plus, it handles, it does impact inventory, meaning that you don't have to have as much, you don't have to have a week on the shelf or in the back. And you can kind of, if everything's working right, you're looking at things, you can manage that, so you don't have as much on back.
Saying you don't like the liquor to age?
Well...
No, okay. All right. No, thank you, Eric.
Any other questions for Eric?
Mr. Mayor, you haven't been there quite a year yet. So when does that actually occur, when you've had one full year operating or managing a liquor store?
It'd be September 17th. So, I think we've got a good start on some things, you know. My thought is, we're, on a good day, we're in third place. So, you know, again, there's challenges at this business, as any business that you run. Hopefully, you have more good days and bad days. So it has been challenging, and it is fun to kind of see things kind of improve on some fronts there that are definitely challenging, so.
One other question, Mr. Mayor. On events, I didn't see Taste of Marshall listed. You do plan, you do participate in that one, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct, yeah. We're under, I think...
That's through the chamber?
Yep. That's correct.
Any other questions for Eric? If not, Annette, do you have?
I just, I want to thank Eric. Like you said, he's been here almost a year, and I think there's been substantial changes, and most of them are for the better. And if you've been to the liquor store recently or in the past, probably since you started here, you can tell that the store has changed a lot more displays, and I think it just really adds a lot to the store. So I don't think we touched base on that one. So, just thank you for all your hard work over this past year, and we'll see how the next year goes.
Very good. I would just like to comment that I'd noticed nothing like that often.
Okay.
It is a much better vibe there. I did like the taster you had out last Friday, which might have been a wise, but it is a very, it is a nice vibe out there.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number 18, the 2020 Budget Request from the Sounds of Summer Committee. With us tonight are the leadership of the Sounds of Summer, and Brock, I'll let you introduce the presenter here, so.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Brock Clayth. I'm the president of Sounds of Summer, and with me, I have my vice president, Carrie Jones, and our treasurer, Mark Clayth, and he will give the presentation for the budget.
That sounded pretty good.
Did you say that in front of the mayor?
Brock, are you technically his boss tonight?
No. I have the checkbook, so. There's just a couple things I need to say. Russ was still a valid part of this Sounds of Summer. He has stepped away as the president with his council duties, and he's still a very important part of why this has been successful. We just did our 11th year this year, and it's been, it's getting easier, I would say, Russ. And we're kind of turning things over to Brock and Carrie. And, you know, it's fun for us, Russ and I, to watch. The people are calling us now to get involved in Sounds of Summer, and I think it's made its mark in Marshall as the community festival. We've had some challenging times again this year. Mother Nature was there, her presence was known. But I think overall, we did not have a lot of negative feedback on it. It is what it is. I think the positive thing, it happened early enough, so the people got to disband and go wherever they wanted to. I'm sure all of the local establishments downtown were very happy that we got the rain. We were on track in talking to the Hitching Post and Tom to probably have one of the most successful years as far as crowds and sales and our, the food vendors and everything were just on a positive vibe down there with everything going on. So, again, it was another successful year. You know, and I got to go back and thank all of our community, all of our business, the residents, they donate to this. The community, the business support is phenomenal. Without them, we probably couldn't do this. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that people don't see, that are in-kind, that people do. You'll notice the parking lot got bandaged up a little bit. Well, Dunick did that for us, and then the street department also helped us. And I think the street, the city staff has to be thanked. Without them, we couldn't do it. Dean at the street department and the parks department, it all, and the public safety, the fire department, I mean, everybody's involved in this to make this community event successful. And I think we've got it there. I mean, and it's getting bigger every year. You'll notice on the dates that in the letter, we're in a little bit of a quandary right now, because the Lyon County Fair is scheduled the same weekend as ours, because August 1st is on a Saturday. So technically, it's a leap year. So, the third full weekend would be the 20th, that following weekend after the Lyon County Fair. So we'll probably be moving our date, not moving our date, but it'll be to accommodate the fair and make sure that everybody gets the experience in Marshall and the county. We don't want to step on anybody's toes. So, to go into the financials, again, you've got the Hoffner Broats takes care of all our financials. You've got the report there. You can see that our net assets were down to $18,000 for 2018, a little bit lower than 2017. You know, again, our expenses are there. A lot of things are changing. Our inflatables are changing. There's just a lot of things happening in that. For instance, this year, the third band that was going to perform did not perform. We still had to pay them. They're $7,500. So, those are unforeseen things that we try to forecast for. We did take rain insurance out this year for $10,000. We are still in, we haven't heard back from them. We had it from 7:00 until midnight, and we had to have a quarter of an inch. Well, anybody that was knows of Marshall, we had more than a quarter of an inch, but we're still waiting back for them. So that should help us on the bottom line for 2019, if that comes through. I guess I'll open it up to questions on the financials. We are requesting $7,500 for the city, again, to help us keep this event going. You shaking your head?
It says $10,000.
Well, mine says $7,500, so...
We'll go with yours.
So I don't know...
The letter says 10.
Mine says 75, so I don't... If we want to start out at 10 and we get down to 7,500, that's great. I'm open to that.
Along those lines, I think it was 7,500 for a year, and then last year it was 10. And was that because of the special entertainment, the...
Yes. And just a comment on that special entertainment. I don't know if the general public knows what it costs to bring that headline talent into Marshall. That private business person probably spent in the tune of about $35,000 out of his own pocket to bring that entertainment to Marshall. And that was something that he wanted to do for the community, and it was successful for him. He was happy. And so, again, we're very fortunate to have businesspeople in our community that are stepping forward, and I foresee that coming more in the future for us, too. So, you know, we were honest, we would have never been able to bring that type of entertainment. And we're still trying to maintain that family-free fun event. And down the road, and I'm not saying this, we might end up having to start charging a minimal charge to get into that dance. We're kind of, we want to stay away from that, because we've always had that model as a family-free fun event. So, again, Mr. Mayor, that's, yeah.
So just to clarify, the request last year from Sounds of Summer was 10,000. And I believe later discussions by the council and direction by the council to staff was we were directed to reduce it to 7,500, which was the previous budgeted amount. So in 2018, it was 7,500. And this year, Annette, remind me, is it 7,500 or 10,000? That's currently in the budget.
So, I mean, my letter's wrong. It must have been 10,000. But again, you know, 11 years ago, we started out with $1,000 in the account. And we don't want to get into the negative, because we could have a bad year. We were, with the weather the way it was, we just were a little skeptical, and the amount of money that we had out for the other bands and stuff, we thought it was important to take that rain insurance out. But when you do that, you're adding about another $1,000 of cost to get that insurance on there, too. So, we just thought it was important that we, this year...
The council can correct me, but my recollection is the discussion last year, when it was at the 7,500, was because of the larger balance that was left. when it was at the 7,500, was because of the larger balance that was left.
Yeah, and so, you know, we're trying to maintain, and we're not spending over what is in there, because we want to make sure that we can carry this on throughout the year. And we don't know from the private sector who our corporate sponsors are going to be. I mean, we've been very successful with our corporate sponsors for the last 11 years, and we had a nice meeting today with one to do, and they're on board with us for next year, and it probably could be bigger, so, you know, it's a, it's a growing event for us.
You know, and I think, looking at, you know, like the work sessions we've had earlier today, and some of the other things, I think we understand the importance of community and, and doing the gatherings and having the celebrations, and I really appreciate all the work that the committee and everybody puts in to do this, all the sponsors, all the, you know, all the hard work that goes into it. And I know the community really looks forward to it, and we're just one small piece of this thing to participate, and I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the $10,000 request for Sounds of Summer.
I second that motion, and I think it's very important that we keep this as, when you say minimal fee, I, zero fee.
Zero fee.
I look at, I look at the successful events around, I have to go to several of the state, they don't charge.
And we're, and that, we are trying to maintain that. I mean, that's an important thing to us. You know, and the other comment I'd like to make, there is only eight people on this committee for this entire event, that, and that's from day one to the end of the, and that's from cleaning up the tables, and so it's not, and we have got more interest in people getting on the committee. Again, we're very fortunate, we had a pest control guy that came down, he wants to get on the committee. He sprayed for all the flies and stuff down there for us at no charge. So, it is a community event, and people want to be involved in it, so we're lucky.
So, the motion on table is by Craig, seconded by Jim. So, additional discussion on the motion?
I just have some questions. At this point in time in the year, are pretty much all your revenues and expenses in? Is it, are there more to come, or?
Not yet, Glenn. I don't have the sanitation bill, I don't have some radio advertising bills coming in. There's some outstanding that are still not, they haven't been in yet.
And then we, the insurance thing.
And we don't know where the insurance is.
Because I'm, I'm wondering, you know, in '17, you had excess revenue or expenses of about 6,400, and then in 2018, it was a negative 5,700. So, do you have a rough idea, are we going to have a positive or negative net income this year, do you think?
I, I, I think we're going to be about even.
Okay.
If we get the insurance money, then that's going to change the whole.
But it's not like we're making a huge amount of money this year.
No, no, no.
Other discussion on the motion?
How much did the insurance cost?
It was about $900. Just to tell you, Glenn, and that policy that we had was $10,000. The last band that did not play, we paid them $7,500. So, that's probably just going to give us, that'll wash that, you know, that'll go back in there. But, so $10,000 doesn't go a long ways.
And Russ?
And, and Mr. Mayor, as a member of the council and now advisor to the committee, I just want to thank, personally thank Brock, because he stepped up and, I don't want to use the word baptized by fire, but he got baptized by rain this year. And he did a great job. He, he communicated with Carrie and the other members of the committee, and it was a tough decision to make on Saturday, do we switch bands, do we call it, do we? And again, working with Jim Marshall and his staff, because we can't, I can't speak enough about them as well, because they were in direct contact with Mark and I about the weather moving in, if severe weather. I mean, they were talking hail, they were talking high winds and everything else, and, and public safety kept us informed, because again, we probably had an excess of 2,500 to 3,000 people down there that had to be moved in a short period of time. And we talked about moving them into the Schwan Building, we talked about moving them into the...
Bellows.
Bellows Building, and where do we go with all these people in a short period of time? You can't put them underneath a tent, you know, or, you know, so. I just want to commend, you know, Brock and, and Mark and Carrie and the rest of the staff, and also Jim Marshall and Director of Public Safety and his staff as well, because with all, all of their help, we couldn't have got this done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Just another quick clarification here, so, the goal basically is to break even, not to make lots of money. And, so if we do get the 70, you get the $7,500, is that going to just break even? Or are we going to have 5,000 a profit, or what would it be?
You know, there could be, it could be 5,000 in profit, it could be 35, 4,000. I mean, I don't know, I've got, I'm saying there's probably another 3,500 to 4,000 of the bills that I don't have yet, that, that I just, they're not turned in.
And the reason I'm asking, in the past, you've asked for 7,500, and I think tonight you were possibly thinking you were going to ask for 7,500 again.
Well, that could be an error on my part.
And so I, you know, I...
You know, and the other comment I'd like to make is that there's been some conversations with the city. We, you guys, we have an anniversary date coming up for the city marshal, and we would like to, we've put that on the table, we're going to bring, we'd like to do that on the Sounds of Summer weekend, that, the city's anniversary. So, that extra money, it could go pretty fast, I, because we're probably going to have to get bigger entertainment in at that time, unless somebody steps forward. A band right now, I mean, and I'm going to use Johnny Home, for instance, for next year, is $12,000. So, it's, it's all over the board, and we're going to have to have another band before him, so you're probably talking 15, 16, 17,000 for bands. Well, if you look at our bottom line, the 18, that doesn't, that's not going to go very far.
One of the things, we had previous discussion in the, in planning, early planning for the 150th anniversary of the city of Marshall in 2022, yeah, that's one of the things that the Sounds of Summer committee will need to consider is whether or not, and it sounds like you're committed, but the, but the whole, probably the committee needs to have some discussion about, will we have this as the 150th? Will be in conjunction with Sounds of Summer, it seems to make perfect sense, but it probably is premature for us to say that the city celebration is going to be on, with Sounds of Summer. It'll be a joint discussion.
Yeah, there's, the committee, I'm sure, will be, I mean, more and more.
Just to kind of ask a little bit more about the financials, the revenues were down in 2018, and so for 2018, you didn't, it wasn't a balance, you were under.
We were under.
Right. Something to keep in mind, too.
Any other discussion on the motion, Steve?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm just going to ask a question. How many people, and you may not be able to tell me this, Mark, but how many people from outside of Marshall coming to town for this event?
Well, this year, and I'm going to be, we had people from Minot, North Dakota, we had people from Wisconsin, they were, they follow Pablo Cruz. The draw, I don't know where, you know, how far going out now with Johnny Home. He's got quite a big following, and I'm going to say probably in a 50 to 60 mile radius of Marshall. So, you know, we were advertising on Pipestone Radio, we were in Worthington, and of course, Marshalls, all of Marshall stations, so the draw, we did ask our Dale, our previous building official, just to, because he knew crowds, and he figured there was about 2,500 to 3,000 people down there. And that's what kind of the number we were gauging at, there was a lot of people down there.
And they stayed.
And they stayed.
So, from a standpoint of city development and economic investment, think of all the people staying here and spending money in town. They didn't just come right at the start of the concert, they probably spent some money around, so. I think it's a great idea, I really am in favor of this.
Mr. Mayor, I just, just to partially answer your question, Steve, there wasn't a hotel to be found, room, there wasn't a hotel room to be found, not only in Marshall, Canby, Redwood, Granite, because Sounds of Summer, they had, we had three class reunions, we had one huge wedding in town. So, we were very lucky when, when we had to switch the band performances, and Killer Bees wanted a motel room out at, and the only one we could find was a suite out at Ramada to put them up to get some rest for a few hours. And we ended up buying that room for that Saturday night for them, and then we ended up, they ended up not playing. Yeah, I, I just ran into a gentleman coming into the meeting tonight. He's here getting a tour of the building, they have their class reunion next year, and one of the, he says, when is Sounds of Summer? He said, we're going to have it on that weekend. So, gauging the number of people that come from out of town, it's hard to put a number on there, but we are drawing former Marshall residents back for the weekend. My, my sister-in-law came back from Byron this weekend, they had a class reunion, 50th class reunion. So, it's, I think we're getting more and more of that, that class reunions. That way, they don't have to plan anything for entertainment.
Already here.
Yeah, it's already here, so.
You know, on top of your crack rest, and this is still new, 11, 11 years. My wife, and I'm going to go back to my wife, being from the Iron Range, this is, you know, I think Little Town Evolus is doing their Fourth of July celebration, 75 years. Class reunions and people come together, the town grows by 15,000 people, because it builds. And this, as we build this, this will build. I'd love to see, but let's go to Marshall for Sounds of Summer this weekend. I think you guys are on the right road to do that. It takes time, and it's growing the right way, so I think we continue to support this. We may not be here about 50 years, they'll say, you know, whoever this Clath guy was had a good idea.
Brock somebody or other.
You know, and the only comment I'd make on the fiscal part of it, we are fiscally responsible, but we cannot, if we're going to start trying to bring bigger entertainment in, we're going to need to have to have a commitment, and we can't keep going back to the corporate business. And we do have that, they're very supportive, but we've got to have the city behind us, because it's, it's, we're not going to be able to do it, it's just not.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, I'll move us to a vote on the motion? Close the voting? And the motion does pass without one abstention, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. He'll be presenting next year.
Really?
And he'll make sure he does the letter right.
We'll move then to agenda item number 19, consider the rejection of the bid for the demolition of the building structures on Block 11. Glenn?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. This one's a little difficult. We did call for bids for the, for the demolition of the three buildings at the corner of Block 11, and we only received one bid. And that's always a concern to us, that we don't have a comparison. And we don't even have a comparison to an engineer's estimate, because we don't generally do demolition estimating. We do construction estimating, but I don't know what that number should, should be. So, there was a discrepancy in the bid submissions, in that, in that the addendum number one does not indicate that it was received and included in the bid. I did subsequently call the owner and, and discuss that with him, and asked him, and he said, oh yeah, we forgot to check that. Well, you know, and, and I believe him wholeheartedly. However, when you're the only bidder, you know, you can say that you received it, too, because you essentially got the bid if we get rid of that requirement. So, you know, I kind of believe that we could get better proposals. We still want to get the demolition done yet this fall, before it frees up, so it clears out the lot for anything else that may come after this. But that's the recommendation, you, you see a recommendation, you also have the alternative in front of you. So, that's, if you have any questions, I'd certainly take them.
So, your intention is to go out for proposals?
That's not my intent, is to go out for proposals. Now, we can go out either for bids or proposals, but the dollar amount involved here is less than the, than the level that we have to go for bids. I, I know it's a little difficult, too, when you already have a number out there. Okay, that, that's one concern that we always have.
Did you discuss with anyone the reason why you only received one bid?
I did, and some forgot, some were too busy. So, it's one of those things where kind of slipped through the cracks, but that's not the major reason that I'm making the recommendation.
How long is it going to take to go through the bid process?
Two weeks. And I might be able to get by proposal sooner than that, but we always say two weeks for, for redoing it, because I, I do want to come back to council for a recommendation. So, that's two weeks out.
And the proposal could be from the current bidder?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And we don't share those proposals either.
Any other questions for Glenn?
What do you mean, you don't share the proposals?
We don't share the proposals that you give me and what you give me.
But I mean, this is, this is public record, right?
Absolutely, yes.
So, the local contractor knows exactly what this contractor has bid, so he could cut it by 1,000 bucks and...
But, and so could this guy.
So could this guy, it could be more.
Yeah, so it's a chance we take whether we're going to get lower bids.
And they could technically, no, what happens if they go up? Can we step back and...
No, no, can't step back.
Do we have anything recent demolitions to compare? I mean...
No, there, nothing's really similar.
He built one building, how much did it cost the city?
Yeah, they're all different with respect to type of building, effort to do it. There's a lot surfacing on this job, the concrete and asphalt all has to go. There's some foundations that are just about even with the gravel surface in the back. They have to all be taken out, and we don't know exactly what, what's entailed with those. Now, if we run into any contamination with any proposal, that's in addition.
What is that possibility of that one being an old gas station?
We don't have any record of anything, and neither does the state of hazardous material being there.
That, that was significantly worked on with the bridge conduit project, so there shouldn't be any big surprises in there, shouldn't be.
That's what we're indicating, too.
Right, because Glenn and I actually chatted about that, and, and was part of the dig back into the state's files on that, and there's not a reason to believe that there's anything major there, but that doesn't mean that something isn't there. Just because it's there doesn't mean that there'd be anything we'd have to do with it either. It's, it might be stable plume. The question I have is, is the, is the utility box vault, the big monument in the alley, going to get dealt with during this project?
It will not be.
Okay.
We will go up to the alley and up to the sidewalk on both sides.
Okay.
That's our limits.
In the past, and I can't recall, what, how has the city dealt with, with, or with bid irregularities before? I know I've read them in the paper, and we, I think in the past, we've normally accepted them.
We've had multiple bids, yes, you're correct.
Glenn, are, are we trying to get out of this by a technicality?
No.
In the, in the sense that he's willing to do all the work that we want him to do for this price? It's just that he simply failed to acknowledge receipt of something.
Yes.
But, but he's willing to do the work that was in the addendum.
Yes.
So, in a sense, just because he failed to mention something, we're going to avoid the bid?
That would be the action.
And to be honest, if we've had passed, or we've accepted past bids of irregularities, does that open us up, too?
No, I mean, you reserve the right to reject any and all bids. I mean, I mean, you could reject it, this is too darned high for us, and we'll just take our chances.
Is, is that the concern here, is that we, we're pretty sure we can get a better deal than this?
Yes.
And that, and that's what I need to hear, you know, if we think that, because I mean, has, has the MESHAP or any of that been done on this, the asbestos checks is?
Yes, complete.
All right, perfect. So, there's, there are no hidden gotchas in this project for a bidder?
Not that I can see.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we reject the bid for demolition of the building structures on Block 11, 100, whatever.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John, discussion?
One last thing, so, I think the city attorney clarified this for me, but the idea, even if he had done everything correct, and we felt it was too high, we could still reject it. So, we're not using some kind of technicality to get out of the requirements.
And as Glenn indicated, the anticipated total cost is such that you could seek requests for proposals and not go through the formal bid process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote? Close the voting? And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 20, consider the application for exempt permit for SMSU Foundation for January 8, 2020. for SMSU Foundation for January eight, 2020. Are there any questions about this?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Craig, second by Steve, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion passes. Move then to commission board liaison reports, actually, mine have not met since we last met. So we'll move then to Craig.
Mine have not met, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
Well, we had the rec community ed committee meeting tonight at the pool. We all went out to the pool and saw the state of repair of the pool. It was very enlightening, and there's no question that we need a new pool for everybody. It's just gonna be hammering it out. So that was a very good tour to get the hands-on visualization of where we are, where we've been. Remember, that pool is fifty years old. We're losing somewhere between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand gallons of water a day. Not only is it just water, which is an incredible waste to a precious resource, but it's heated water, which is then replaced with cold water. It's heated and treated water with chlorine, which means we're replacing it and having to go through more chemicals. So, we have to shut it down, period, and get a new one. So, I thank Scott Vandermellen and Preston Stensrude for guiding us through that tour. The EDA met. I got called away from meeting at work, so I was not able to attend that, so I'll defer to Mr. DeKremer.
Glenn?
I have nothing.
John?
Okay, the EDA did meet. We took some action tonight, calling for the hearing on the Canoga Park childcare tax abatement request. We covered the treasures report, discussed having an EDA bus tour, which should be coming up. I don't recall the dates right offhand, but, hey, keep watching for that. Those will be out to just do a tour of the area with a number of people. I think last year we had about three buses, and they're shooting for about the same thing this year. And basically said goodbye to our intern, Kritika, that helped out through the summer, and received a report from her, so. Along with a number of other discussions, that was about it for the EDA. MMU did have a meeting tonight that started at four thirty, so was not able to attend with this meeting and with the tour of the pool, so.
Thank you, John. Russ?
CBD will meet tomorrow. Police advisor did not meet. The library will meet, did not meet in August, but there was an announcement coming from the library that Lisa Spiker will be the new director of the Plum Creek Library System and starting September sixteenth. She comes with an extensive education background, and she's currently working as a reference librarian at Raspisson College in Mankato. So Plum Creek will have a new director starting September sixteenth.
Thank you, Russ. Jim? Move then to council member individual items, Jim?
I have a couple of things. The first is, and I chatted with Officer Marshall, Chief Marshall a little bit before the meeting, Tim Walz made a statement today, I didn't know if it was today or yesterday, that as communities, we need to start preparing for the legalization of recreation, Mayor. Now, does that mean we need to form a committee or do something? But I think it's something as a city that we should probably start addressing, along with, with our police force and, and how we're gonna handle it as a city. Boy, Tim Walz made it sound, this could be twelve to twenty-four months away, and that's it. So I, you know, I don't know if we form a committee or how he addresses, but he just made the note that cities, municipalities, counties, whoever should be starting to be aware that it is coming. It's not a if, it is a when, though. And on that note, I know that's something your staff, throw it on your folks, Sharon. And then the other thing that was a concern to me is, is recycling has become an issue in Lyon County. I believe the county, I'm not sure where they, they're sitting, but I think we need to visit with the county on what's gonna happen with curbside recycling or lack thereof. And, and we need to address that as a city and work with the county on, on a solution to that, so we don't end up with all of that recyclables thrown away or strewn around their streets or what's gonna happen. I believe as it stands, now the county is looking at eliminating curbside recycling, so I think we need to work with them to find a solution to that problem.
Again, that's your plate, Sharon.
Just to add to that, Roger Schrader, who's the environmental director for Lyon County, did call me last week, and he stated that, when he did call me, that the county was gonna meet and discuss what was gonna, what their action was gonna be. And then he didn't leave me another call here late last week, and I haven't been able to respond. But I'll have some conversations with him on possible solutions. I, I'm not sure what they would be, and I understand the difficulty of the, of the bids that they got back, and the current market for recyclables is just not there. And so I, I also kind of understand from the, from the bidders and the position that they're in. So yeah, we'll find out more information.
And this is also a, not to jump out a turn here, but it probably, you raise an important point. This, this, this will open up discussion on a number of things, like, does the city have access to the SCOR funds, or is that exclusive to the county? I don't know the answer to that. That does subsidize the cost of recycling. The curbside recycling largely affects residents of the city of Marshall, as well as other residents and communities, but with Marshall as the largest community, it really doesn't affect rural areas. So it is really a, a city of Marshall important issue. We do license refuse haulers, and whether or not mandatory recycling is part of that or not, you know, will be another discussion, whether or not we're, you know, this will prompt to go to, you know, organized collection of garbage as well as recycling. That would be, I mean, all these things now are probably in the discussion.
And with, you know, with our discussions with the World Cafe last night, discussions in city of Marshall, you know, I look at, let's not take a step backwards. And I know our younger generation, I'm thinking my children, we try to see how to retain our young people in the community. My kids would be very upset if they found out that we're throwing our recycling. So it's something that, as we look at our younger generation, that is sometimes very, very important to them. So it is something that is important. Other than that, I have nothing.
I just want to thank City Minister Hanson and the mayor yourself, and any, anybody else that organized and helped at the World Cafe meeting last night. I thought it was very well attended, and exceptional comments, I think, came out of all the presentations, so thank you to all of those folks.
And John?
First of all, data one, Russ's comments regarding the World Cafe. At your location, and some of you've got it out there, I left a card regarding United Community Action Partnership and the contribution they make to the county. A little over four point six million dollars that was put into the county directly, and a little breakdown of where that goes. Over two thousand households in the county were served, and over fifty-two hundred people. And just in comparison, over the nine counties that they do serve, total was just shy of fifteen million. So you can see at four point six million, we're getting kind of lion's share of that economic impact for all the work that they do in, for the county and for the areas. Some interesting information that they put out as of, as of last week, so I thought it'd be a good, something good to take a look at. So, if there's any questions, you can let me know. Head Start Building, yes. Some more good news there. That is, I have not heard yet if the contracts have been signed, but they did. Thanks with the work of, really through Colin Peterson's office, they were able to railroad the request through and get action taken on the grant approv, that they were approved, but it has to go all the way up to the federal to get official, and they've got that. So they are very close at signing contracts, and be planning on starting as soon as possible, whatever that really amounts to. But they're gonna be building a Head Start Building adjacent to the property in Saratoga. If you didn't notice, kind of a green spot area where corn was not planted, that's the location. It'll be leveled off, there'll be a playground in there, there'll be a bus turnaround, and a Head Start facility that's put in there. And if you think there's bureaucracy within the city, just try doing a Head Start Building with federal and everything under the sun that you have to get approved and modified. They looked at every building in Marshall to see if it was feasible to use, and nothing would meet the criteria for Head Start. So, it ended up being that they will build a new one. In the interim, they're making some small modifications to the present building. Executive Director is giving up her office, and it's gonna be a schoolroom. A few other ones moved around. They're making schoolrooms as much as they can in the, within the building on a temporary basis. They've got some requests out for getting a couple of other spots licensed, some teachers licensed, and that is another, I would say, state bureaucracy trying to get that through right now. Health and Human Services is a little slow in responding, but they will be starting Head Start this year. It will not be quite on time that they really wanted to, which would be really next week, but they will have it going, so.
Thank you, John. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna go out a little bit on what Jim was talking about with the, with the recycling and, and, you know, there's, there's probably some opportunity, as we open this up, to talk about source reduction and all the other things that come with it. I know we've had discussions in the past about how do we reduce the amount of, of single pass, things that need to be recycled. And I know there's a lot of talk about water bottles and, and store bags and all the rest of that. So maybe, maybe the spur discussion on the whole issue with curbside is gonna lead us to maybe some other bigger discussions. But I agree with what, what Councilman Luzinski also said, is that I'm not prepared to, to watch Marshall go thirty years backwards on what we've done to, to try to, to clean up what our, what our waste paths are. And I know the markets are bad right now, but I think we still, we can't control those, but we can at least control the parts that, that come out that can be reused, whether the markets are there or not. I know that's a driver, and those are some of the difficulties that the county board is dealing with, with trying to make this all budgeted out. But I really think it is important that we, that we task our staff to, to participate and cooperate as much as we can with that, to try to figure out what the solution is and, and to make sure that we still serve the residents of Marshall at a minimum with, with that service. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
Two things on the recycle, it's important to do that, and I agree, and I don't know what the answer is, because historically, we'd sent it over to China, and they did stuff with it, and they bought it. But I don't know if anybody saw that they did core samples in the Arctic Ocean and the Antarctic in the ice, and they found microplastic in there. And that's disgusting. And that's landing up in the ocean. So we, we gotta learn to take care of Mother Earth and, and recycling to the best of our ability and not using it. I mean, figure out alternatives. You know, corn plastic biodegrades in about ten years and it's gone. It's a great, great thing. I don't know if, you know, we need to incentivize science to do a better, a better job of getting it there, but it's all cost issue. The other thing I wanted to say is the Tallgrass Electric Vehicle Charging Station, I think that's a fantastic thing, again, going with green energy and things like that. We got a grant from the diesel, the VW diesel thing, and that's supplying a charging station that'll go into Tallgrass Liquor, so I think that's a great thing. And we can now, there's charging stations in Worthington, we'll have a charging station. Wilmer's got one, I know St. Cloud's got one. I think then you can probably get up to Duluth. I don't know if Hinckley's got one, but I bet they do at the casino. So you can probably get from Worthington to Duluth on an electric vehicle without having to worry about running out of fuel. So, I think it's awesome. That's all.
On those, on those charging stations, we've actually had them at the sleep-in for two years, and if people are worried about the cost, the cost is extremely minimal to the, to Tallgrass Liquor. I don't think, and now you're gonna see a change in your electric bill.
We had souls separate anyway.
Oh, is it? I said, we never even know, ours is hooked to our system at the hotel, and we don't notice. There's no difference.
John, you want to explain that a little bit?
Well, this is, was mentioned by Steve. This is part of the settlement with Volkswagen. They contacted MMU, oh, probably a year plus ago, and as part of the settlement, expected that there was gonna be a charging station. This is separate from Tallgrass. This is, I believe this is a separate organization that's actually operating the whole thing. But it needed to be on city property, and they wanted it at a location that is high traffic, and this seemed like the good spot for that, kind of a high-traffic area and yet part of the city. So, it will be a charge. I didn't realize if ones at sleep-in, you're required to stay there and to charge up. I think that question has probably popped up, so that maybe something...
Yes, well, you're not.
Yeah, maybe something you want to advertise as well, so. But yeah, this is a new item coming in. It's actually a fairly strong electrical current, because it's, it's a fast charge. Generally, some of these cars will come up in about twenty minutes now, so it'd be a pretty quick charge. So you can plug it in and go over to Walmart, Tallgrass, or Pizza Hut, take your pick.
Well, I thought going to have a couple samples and...
Yeah, you could do that too. Yeah.
Jim, you guys don't charge at the sleep-in because that charging station's hooked to some generators on the exercise bikes in the workout room, right?
It is. Our, we actually put it by the AR, the best. Ours, we put it by Tesla. So Tesla was very generous to us when we did ours.
And Glenn?
I have nothing.
I'll just hit on several things. This has been actually a busy month of August, but obviously, we heard about Sounds of Summer. Also, that week was the Hero's Walk, which was very well-attended, that recognized first responders and public safety and fire and clergy and others that, military and others that really helped make the community what, a safe place and really what the community is. So that was very nice, and, you know, so thanks to the organizers of that, which included our staff at the Senior Center in cooperation with the staff at the YMCA. So, and then we had a number of ribbon cuttings, including the basketball court that was Kristen Carter's Court at Independence Park. We had the ribbon cutting at Ashley Furniture. We had a ribbon cutting this week at Hobby Lobby. So there is a lot of activity that is going on, not only new businesses, but increased amenities, increased regional draws, and in the case of Hobby Lobby and Ashley Furniture, a really nice reuse of a, of a building that, you know... So with that, we'll move then to staff reports, starting with Sharon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I do wanna just cover on a, a few items before the 2020 preliminary levy discussion and direction, and just some follow-up to the World Cafe. Last night, you never quite know how many people will attend when you plan the event, but we did have eighty-two members of the public participate in last night's event. I appreciate the council's support in letting staff proceed with that type of event. It did obviously cost some funds. We hired a facilitator for that, and then the venue for the event was minimal, of course, but there were some additional costs with that. And I know that today, we also had a session with some community leaders, and that was really well-received in addition to what happened last night. So, lots of, lots of ideas and lots of notes, and our facilitators are gonna condense that and, and provide some direction. Then we'll be looking for a date in November. That's their next availability to kind of pull this all together. I know one businessperson did state that the, the worst thing that can happen now is we do nothing. So, we do wanna kind of keep the, some momentum going on this, and... So we do want to kind of keep some momentum going on this and encourage action, whatever that may be. Just want to follow up a little bit on Block 11, because that was discussed tonight. We do actually have a draft development agreement with a potential developer. As you may be aware, the EDA did send out requests for proposals. We did receive two, and we're currently working with one specific developer. So we're going to do some additional financial reviews to determine what it will be needed to get the deal done. We will have the city attorney review the development agreement before anything is signed, and hopefully, we can see some progress on that. I think we've got really good interest. So I do want to cover the 2020 preliminary levy discussion. I did provide a handout. The first cover sheet is actually, it's a typical sheet, which looks like this. It is the, we actually put that in resolution form, and it would provide the action item to adopt the preliminary levy. The preliminary levy does not technically need to be adopted per statute until September 30th. We could do this in the second meeting in September, but I do feel that we've got the information we need for the general budget to the best of our ability, and some of the information will actually come after September 30th. The city is currently looking at different insurance options. That may actually reduce some of the budget figures, but we're not quite sure. This is a not-to-exceed levy, so we cannot go up, we can only go down. So if that be the case, we can look at that. Just to kind of point out real briefly again, I don't want to do the presentation again, but overall, you know, the impacts for the proposed general levy increase, which when we presented in August 13th, our presentation materials is on 5.99% increase, and that would equate to total new dollars of $406,142. When you're looking at a total general fund budget of $12.8 million and all fund expenditures of approximately $30 million, it's not a lot of money. The percentage just makes it seem like it more than it is. However, we do know that it's a little higher than our average increase for the levy, which is around 4.19%. A rate of growth from 2018 to 2019, hopefully I'm saying that correctly, is it's not as quite as great as it was the previous year. Last year, we had a TIF tax capacity that came back on, and it allowed us a little more room in terms of the levy and the impact on our taxpayers. I did include in the packet, again, this was in the August 13th presentation, the actual impact to our taxpayers, and that currently is at the 5.99%. If, one of the things I mentioned on August 13th is, would there be a potential, and staff could work towards this, is reducing the preliminary budget numbers from 5.99% to 3.99% would put us below the average levy increase. The actual total dollars then would, new dollars, would be $271,142. So again, we're not, we're talking a lot less dollars because of the smaller amount. I do have some concerns about meeting the budget in terms of revenue and some of the expenditures we put in place. But again, you know, on a given year, we do our best, and sometimes our revenue exceeds what we project. Sometimes we underexpend the expenditures, and then things happen that are beyond our control, weather emergencies and so forth. And so we're trying to put forth the best budget. So I think really the discussion, you know, or direction that we'd like to get from staff is, our presentation on August 13th was at that 5.99. We could work towards the 3.99. Would you want somewhere in between, because this is a not-to-exceed levy? I think if the council does go to the 3.99 amount, I don't recommend we go any lower when we adopt the final levy in December, unless we come up with some additional savings somewhere, some additional revenue. I don't see that really happening between now and the end of December. So again, I could go over some of the prior presentation materials. There's a lot of factors. Really, our debt service levy has gone down. General fund has had some impacts, because I think we budgeted closer in 2019 than we did in 2018. And then, speaking of debt, we're actually putting a portion of the levy towards debt reduction, with the establishment of the Street Capital Fund. And we do have City Hall bonding and that line item in there. Of course, we're really using existing revenue sources because of some other debt that dropped off, so I want to be clear about that. So I'm going to pause for a little bit, and just if the council would just like to give some general feedback, and maybe I'll just add, because I had, I actually had the city of Worthington ask for this chart today. Our city assessor, Dave Parsons, annually puts the tax rate, tax capacity comparisons for cities in our county and then the surrounding area and some that are not in our area on our tax rate. I think that likely what I will do with that is what I did last year, is I did a newspaper article for my monthly column in the Marshall Independent. It was very well-received, and I think I will repeat that with the new data. We still look really favorable when it comes to our tax rate, and so it's really good information. And that was in the presentation on August 13th as well. So I'll just be quiet and just kind of get some feedback from you on the preliminary levy, which I propose to be adopted on September 10th.
Thank you, Sharon. Just another word about your article of last year. I think that actually was repeated or reprinted in the Worthington paper last year.
Okay, input?
On the levy, since nobody else is going on first. I'm one that's for lower taxes, so I would like to bring it down to 3.99, because last year, we were a little higher at 6.43, I believe. Corrected or wrong? So I would push for the 3.99%. You know, keeping in mind that the tea leaves, the economists who look at the tea leaves say we are heading into, and I said, the economists are into a recession in the next three years. To keep that in mind, but I would like to, I would personally support the 3.99, just to keep our taxes down.
Other input?
Okay, interjecting here. Honestly, I'm okay at, since this is a preliminary, I'm okay with something between the 3.99 and a 5.99. One of the things that's just also come out recently, they haven't exactly been the greatest in weather forecasting, but on the other hand, neither has anybody else. But, you know, there's been projections of some very heavy snowfall in October, November. That's before we have to make the final decision on the levy. It might be good just to not go too low at this point and just wait and see what December does bring, because if we get another nasty snowfall, that's going to be kind of a kick in the teeth to the budget, no matter what, so.
And just a word on that, Sharon, you may want to clarify, but as was discussed at the August 13th budget meeting, the, you know, the budget for snow removal as well as the repair of some of the storm damage was really based on what our most recent experience was. So if we have a mild winter starting in 2020, that will be to our benefit. But if we're in a pattern with similar, then we know what we experienced last year, which was every few days, we had major expenditures, cleared streets.
The Streets Department and our Director of Public Works for that particular budget did add in to the 2020 budget, snow hauling, rental of a road grader, and then repairs as well was an addition. And if we don't have that, that'll be helpful to the end-of-the-year fund balance. We do know that in 2018, audited numbers, we expended approximately $70,000 more than what we had budgeted for that particular department, just because of the previous years' winter and other issues that happened, including a lot of rain in the summer of 2018, around July. So that's what we did for 2020, proposed at this time.
Clarify, in the upcoming budget, you have it built in already?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I agree with Councilman DeCramer. I think the 5.99 is probably a little bit on the high side, but maybe the 3.99 is a little bit on the low side. So I would encourage staff maybe to find a happy medium in there someplace, and hopefully it's closer to the 3.99 than it is to the 5.99. That's an easy, maybe that's a chicken answer, but that's an easy answer halfway.
There's no reason to, we have to decide before the term anyway, so we might as well wait and see what you that we can, so.
The other thing to keep in mind is the number that we establish in the preliminary levy resolution is the number that goes out for the truth and taxation preliminary notices. And, you know, if, as Sharon rightly pointed out, we can always work down from that, but the number that goes out on that card seems to be the number that people...
It sticks in their craw. That's the number.
Right. So it makes sense to probably have that as, I mean, we know that we're going to try to move down anyway, to have that as close as what we, our goal would be, giving us the flexibility, recognizing that this is August, and, yeah, we have to remember there's still some unknowns with our current budget. Other input? Sharon decided to give you that direction here.
Close enough.
Somewhere's between here and there.
Anything else?
Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple of things. Our construction has slowed down a little bit because of the weather that we've had and the rains that we've had, but I tell you what, the Merritt Center project is coming along well. We meet weekly to discuss that project, and when it gets far enough along, we'd like you to come out and see that skid pad. It's kind of like walking on glass. It's going to be a real interesting piece of training facility at that site. So I'll leave that for some surprises later. Don't go walk out there without shuffling your feet, though. And then the other projects, too, have been delayed a little bit. We have the parking lot at the Red Baron Arena and Fourth Street and Country Club Drive project that's coming along. We also have a major project with an apartment building wanting to open next week with a lot of work left to do, and the staff is working hard with the contractors to get all the life safety items taken care of. But we're optimistically skeptical about what that, how that might turn out. But we want to make sure that the life safety things are taken care of. Another comment, I was pleasantly surprised about the turnout for the World Cafe as well. And I don't know if you noticed, but there was a representative from Mindot at the meeting looking for what might be done with a future educational procedure for the Highway 19 project from Bruce Street to Fourth Street. And not that they want to steal that exact process, but he was really impressed with it and said, you know, Mindot really needs to come up with the three questions. Like was discussed last night, it wasn't too many, it wasn't too few. He thought that worked out really well. And so I think you'll see that concept coming back for other types of public informational programs from Mindot as well. That's all I've got.
I mean, it was good to see all that Fourth Street and Country Club is open and more schools.
Yep. We said it would be, and the contractor worked hard to get that opened up. And while not as smooth and as nice as maybe everyone would like to see, it's open for school, and we'll make sure it is.
And Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. City discussions regarding the purchase of the now vacant Helena property on Highway 19 have been restarted. We finally did hear back from legal counsel, and they've got a proposed agreement back to me for review, so hopefully, we can bring that back. Then I did recently meet with some of the owners and tenants out of the Broadmore Valley to discuss tenant rights issues with them, as they continue to look for assistance from the city in whatever way we can provide. So that's an ongoing issue right now.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll move then to agenda number 26 is the information items, including building permits. Agenda number 27 is the upcoming meetings, listing... Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Craig, second by Jim to adjourn discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes, we are adjourned.